Well, and I didn't see anybody.
Okay, by my timepiece, it's 12:30. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of Weatherford College today, Thursday, October the 12th, 2023, 12:30 PM. Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas. Consider and act upon a posted agenda. I now call this meeting to order. Mr. Baker, would you do us the honors?
Be happy to. Please bow with me. Lord, we're thankful again for you bringing us together with this beautiful weather. We get in the middle of semester. We're thankful for the students you brought our way and for the board members who have given up their time. Will please be with them as they deliberate today and be with our faculty and staff as they continue to help our students get to a better place. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please stand while we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Worley, do we have anyone who has signed up to address us today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Item number three on the agenda, the President's Report. Dr. Farmer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations. Congratulations to piano professor Dr. He Young Song on recently being inducted into the Steinway &amp; Sons Hall of Fame. Her name is now engraved on the Hall of Fame wall in the Steinway &amp; Sons warehouse in New York City. Congratulations, Dr. Song. We're honored to be associated with someone of your caliber. Thank you for all that you do for our students and for our college. Weatherford College's Cadence Tyndall won the Women's All Around title recently at the Vernon College Rodeo, and the Coyotes took first place in three additional events. Previously, Trent Sorey set an arena record in steer roping at the Saul Ross State University rodeo in Alpine. The defending conference champion Weatherford College volleyball team remains in sole possession of first place in the Northern Texas Junior College Athletic Conference. WC will host the regional volleyball tournament beginning on Thursday, November 2nd. Go Coyotes! Employee notice. DMAC requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. We have no resignations to report since the last board meeting. Mr. Chair, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you very much, President Farmer. Item number four, consent agenda and financial reports. The items A through F have been posted. Is there any comment, question, observation about any of those items on the consent agenda? From anyone? Dr. Cantrell, is there anything there that you feel like needs to be commented upon?
No, not at this point.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you. All in favor? Appears to be unanimous. Item number five, consideration and possible action on the irrigation well at the main campus. Dr. Cantrell?
I sent out this week quite a bit of material to you all, and I hope that explained a little bit more about the proposals that we received on the irrigation wells on the college. We only had two qualified proposals that came in, and we were recommending that the low proposal of $370,000 from Irwin Waterwell Drilling was approved last time. I know at that time you tabled that and needed more information, so I pulled out the books and started working. A review of the history of the campus, and I think that's real important, and I will say our engineer just walked in today, Philip Vergasi, and if we have more detailed questions, then I can provide you here with us. But a review of the history, in 2003, as Trevor will remember, we built a baseball park, and we had to have a irrigation well. And that irrigation well, well, we ended up building two, digging two, and those came in at $381,000 for the two. We had, one of those wells was a 15 horsepower well. The other, our other two wells are only seven and a half horsepower well. Since that time, one of those wells collapsed, and what happened? The pump went out, and it dug itself so deeply down into the well that it never could be And it's caused us, at many times, to be short of water. The additional two wells were dug in 2013. I know you probably don't, you may not remember this, but that was about the time that we went on, built the new buildings up here in the middle of the campus, and we planted grass. We really hadn't had a lot of grass before that time. And so we dug two more wells at that point. They were dug over here by the Coyote Village, but the well, I mean, the tank itself is on top of the hill, and that tank will hold 150,000 gallons, I believe. Is that right?
144,000.
But they only had the seven and a half horsepower motors that were in them, and they also had the, the...
Six-inch PVC.
The six-inch PVC were put in those. This well, we went in, and we had to, it took us a good long while to get permission for the Upper Trinity Valley. We worked about a year on getting that process accomplished, and when they came out this summer and they approved it for, for the 150,000 gallons, we felt very confident that we should go ahead and take it at that. They did lower it just a little bit, I think, and from what we've heard, that's been the case many times, so we went ahead and took the 150,000 approach at that time. With that, with the design I've been attached for you all to review, the letter that described the well from Philip, do you have any specific questions about that and what the requirements are on the well now? I know it's the 15 and a half horsepower. We're going through, it will be drilled at the top of the hill this time, and it will go through a lot of layers of rock, and that's even more reason to have the 15 and a half horsepower that we've got to have, and the steel casing is very important. Philip's explained to me because that PVC, that 15 and a half horsepower, a lot of heat is generated in that. Is that correct? Philip, and that that could, it will melt those PVC pipes. Right? Tried to learn a lot, and got it myself, too. We know at this point in time that we, our current needs are 110,000 during the growing season, and we've been short many, many times and had to cross over to city water for irrigation. There's been times that we couldn't, that we had irrigation lines that were off, and we couldn't get to that. So this summer has been a real challenge for us to keep this with the drought going on and all that, for it to keep it as green as it has been. I know it's been lacking at times, but they've worked very hard to keep it there. But more important is to look at our future, too, what we've got coming on. We've got to, this fall, come in and plant 56 new trees on this campus, and much of that came from the city approving, when they approved Coyote Village, and we had to cut down some of those other trees. Now we're required to go back in and put 56 more, and those trees were not irrigated, I'll say, but the other trees will be on the other parts of the campus where they will be irrigated. We've also got in the budget for this coming year, we'll be bringing them back to you later, is a proposed greenhouse, and this, there's been a lot of discussion with Dr. Farmer and the new executive vice president. The talk of putting it on campus instead of out at the 4H farm. So it would be placed very close to this irrigation well. So we feel like the needs have grown there, and then also to meet for the next five years, five to 10 years, our college master plan with all of our growth that's expected, is why we feel like we need one of this size. I know Philip included all of those in his plans. We did go to outside people to verify that those needs were necessary. Talked with Beardenhampton &amp; Brown. Philip probably doesn't know that, but I did. He may. They were in my office on another project, so we just had a long discussion, and they talked to the Upper Trinity Valley Conservation District. And they would not really, they said for a public water that this well was not out of line at all. They, they could not describe exactly with the irrigation the difference and all of that, so they would not go into that, but they said for the well of this size and that, of this magnitude, the design was good. We, and with that, so we asked for a breakdown of cost that I've included in on this, exactly what is included in that total $370,000. The well construction itself is 153,000. The surface casing would be 25,000. The well equipment, 75,000. Irrigation tie-in, 12,000. Landscape allowance around it would be 5,000. An allowance requested by the owner that we asked for were electrical upgrades, irrigation controls, and also there, we asked for that owner's contingency be placed in there for anything that might go over that they would be coming back to us later. So based upon that, we are recommending, I would like to ask right now, though, before I know it is that, if you have further questions or if you feel any more comfortable. Mr. Bailey?
Yes. So you're, the water need for the college projected out five years, at what number?
I don't have the complete on the five-year, 10-year, our needs, but we are, this well will handle 150,000 gallons a day.
144,000.
144,000 a day. We're approved from the Upper Trinity for 150,000.
So, so can you do, can you get that information for us? Just for do a projection of what's our water need over the next five years?
Okay. That would be difficult right now with, with looking at the buildings and everything, all of our plans to get that exactly. I know how much we've grown with our needs in the last 10 years, and that has been dramatic.
So, next question. The two existing wells will produce 72,000 gallons a day. And I don't quite understand the last bullet. It says the third well added can produce projected 50 GPM that will increase the total combined well production to 70. Shouldn't that be 144,000?
Doctors, you see, you see where he's referring to? The last line of the memorandum talks about if the third well is added and can produce the projected 50 GPM, that increases the total production to 72,000 gallons.
Now, that 72 is on two wells.
Yes, please.
So the north, the current two existing wells are at, they're limited at 25 gallons per minute.
Okay.
The both of those combined produce 72,000 gallons.
Okay.
If we add the additional well, that doubles, so that one well will do what the two wells are doing right now. We add those together and get the 144,000.
So shouldn't the number in the last bullet be 144,000?
Yeah, I think, I think the memo doesn't have the right number.
He threw that with me, too, and he didn't catch me.
Because your first sentence says we need 110,000 currently, right now.
Yes, sir.
And the last sentence is we're only going to make 72, so that's, that's the reason we want to catch him.
They are correct. The last bullet is saying that for one well is, for the 50 GPM is 72,000. When you add both, all three wells together, you get 144,000.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you very much.
And then, so there is two wells? There's not three currently?
No, we have three current wells.
Yes, so, I'm sorry. So, so you have two separate sections right now. You have the main campus on this side of the street, which has two existing wells right here. You have another one, singular, which is behind baseball, which handles that side of the street.
Oh, okay.
If that helps.
And then the other just point of clarification, they're going to be able to think, do this over Christmas, so we don't need to after the...
Well, we put that in there, that right now we're not contemplating that we will need this. I did go to Dan right before the meeting, and I had been reviewing this also. I asked him if I could amend that recommendation. If need be, we would add those, but they won't know until they're in the middle of drilling those whether we'll need those or not.
How many gallons does the third well produce, do you know?
I'm sorry?
How many gallons does the third well produce?
Which one, which one would you consider the third? The one across the street? That's, that's limited at 25 a minute.
So it's, what, the same, like 30, 31,000 gallons a day it adds?
Yes, sir. It'd be close, 32,5 approximately, similar.
So can, can we, can you use, are those systems connected, or is that strictly isolated to that side?
They're, they're isolated.
No chance to connect them?
It's, it's possible. We would have to look into that.
That would only put us like 6,000 gallons a day short if we connected 72 and 32.
And, and you know, this varies, too, at times. This is what our use has been, so it could, you know, we have to cross over every now and then, just like this well down here has been out, they had to put a, bring it in a new part for the pump this week, so it's been out two or three weeks waiting for a part to come in. So we, at times, had to cross over this. We do kind of need a connection, I will say, and to point out that that, when we built the ballpark, that whole cost of that whole irrigation system and the well was a million four, and a lot of that was the piping up on the hill, you know, for the irrigation.
If all three wells were connected, that production is equal to the volume of that tank over there. Both are 144,000, is that right?
It would be just shot.
So anyway, that gives you a margin of flexibility, especially if you connect with that third well to it. You can fill that every day from, from that direction, fill that tank.
I think that the main concern would be getting with the city and figuring out the piping to connect the two. The, the cost associated with that may be quite high.
I think it's obvious that we need the well, and what we were concerned with last month was the cost, and I think your research has shown that it is, especially with the outside opinion, that it is, the cost is appropriate for this type of well, because it's going to be so much better than the wells that we've built in the past.
Hopefully great longevity.
Yes.
To explain the alternate number two a little better, that is, that sum of money that you're seeking approval for is to be able to do this after hours and over the Christmas holidays? Is that what we're talking about?
Absolutely, and I might let John address those two items, too.
So, so option two would be for after hours? Our goal, obviously, is to do this during business hours, but we have to keep in mind that it's right next to the Don Allen Nursing Building. So our goal is to get this completed over the Christmas break, for the majority of, while those students are gone, so that we're mindful of when those students are in the building.
Okay, so, so that, that's already taken into consideration that you're going to be trying to do it during that time. This amount of money is if we don't get it done, then that's what we'll be spending the overtime paid for to accomplish that. Okay. And your recommend, your recommendation is that we approve the 370 base and the alternate one, if needed?
We could, if needed, go ahead and approve it, and that 5,500 for the...
For the sand separator?
Sand separator. They'll know once they get in there and what they're dealing with, whether they'll need that sand separator or not. Right now, they don't think they will.
Any more questions or comments from the board?
I'll just say, good job, Dr. Cantrell.
Oh, thank you, and I'm sorry about the error that I had.
No, I think this was information that I was looking for, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Okay. With that said, we have a motion from the board to award the new irrigation well at the main campus, Project RFP-02-24 to Irwin Waterwell Drilling LLC, in the amount of $370,000, with an alternate number one of $5,500, as has been stated here today, and an alternate number two for $57,200 if that is found to be necessary by virtue of the comments that have been made here today.
And that's not included in everyone else's packet? I brought it, brought it to Dan in case we needed that added to it.
So with those addendums, is there a motion to so approve? I'll move. Is there a second? All in favor? Appears to be unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number six is consideration and possible action, nomination of candidates to serve on the Parker County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. As you noticed in your packet, the legislature made some changes in Senate Bill Two to the composition of the Appraisal District Board of Directors and also the selection process. For counties our size, there will be five directors appointed by the taxing units, three directors elected by popular vote, and the tax assessor collector will now be a voting member. Each taxing unit, including this board, may nominate candidates for this board between one and five. In a future board meeting, most likely in November, then you will vote on the entire slate of candidates. So your option today is to nominate candidates to send back to the appraisal district.
Okay. Is it simply that we're going to elect to make a nomination at a later date?
You can, or you can actually forward names. You can actually nominate names today.
We don't have to do that today?
You don't have to, but if you don't do it today, there won't be any names from this body, and then you'll receive a ballot of the names that have been presented in the next board meeting.
Any board members have a comment, one way or the other, about that? Okay. Mr. Baker, do you have an observation or a recommendation in that regard?
It's fine if you don't have a nomination at this point. We can revisit next time when you have the actual list of nominees, and you can vote at that time, if that's what you'd like to do.
Okay. Well, given that comment, is there any necessity for action today?
No action taken, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it very much. Item number seven is reports from Dr. Farmer. Dr. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, you have your WCWC report and Academic and Student Services update in your packets. Additionally, you have the Annual Access and Affordability Report. One thing that I would like to very briefly highlight is the increase in out-of-state students. Last year, Weatherford College had 111 out-of-state students, and this year, that number jumped up to 211 out-of-state students. And that is a testimony to some of our very strong academic programs, such as our sonography program, respiratory care program, our allied health program, some of our programs in the arts that draw out-of-state students, as well as some of our athletic programs that are excelling. And so I would commend faculty, staff, and coaches for doing a great job of building quality programs that are attracting students from across the country. And item number seven D, we have our International Study Abroad verbal presentation that will be delivered by Dr. T. Dr. T, the floor is yours, sir.
Hello, I'd like to thank all of you for your time. I'm here today to talk about our International Study Abroad and Tours program that we've been doing for, since 2008, so it's been going on for a little long time, and it's been very successful. So far, we've had approximately 250 or so students and others, faculty members and some, let's say, former employees, former students, attending these tours over the course of the years. You can see the all the locations where we have been, and in some cases, there's been repeats as far as that's concerned. And so we've had a great deal of success. I'm here to also introduce two of our people that are going to be presenting alongside me. This will be Dr. Professor Adrian Hamper, who is the committee chair for our Study Abroad program, and Romney Landis, who has led last year's program to London and Paris and has participated in quite a number of the programs as well.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm here to give you a brief history of the Travel Abroad program. So we started this in 2008. Actually, Dr. Ainsworth, Diane Ainsworth, former Faculty Member of the Year, started this in 2008, and it was quite successful in its first year. By the second year of the program, we were already at 40 people traveling abroad in 2009, and I'm happy to say I've got to be one of those people. So this program has been taking off. It's been quite successful each year. We have some important moments in the program, one of which is in 2011, we had our first interdisciplinary trip. So previous to that, Humanities was behind all of the trips, but in 2011, we had Finarts and Humanities go to Italy and Greece, and that was quite successful. Subsequent to that, we had more Humanities trips, but in 2018, we had a trip to Costa Rica, where Dr. Allison Stamatys, who also was a Faculty Member of the Year, she went to Costa Rica with Jared Abraham, and of course, there was a lot of biology, which is her specialty, that they explored there. Around 2019, it became so established, we were in 10 years of the program, that we decided we needed a little bit more structure. So we worked with Vice President Endy, and we came up with sort of a grouping of things. First, we created best practices, not hard and fast rules, but practices that we thought were important. Some examples would be two faculty members should always go on the trip, so if something were to happen to one of them, we had another backup faculty member. The other has to do with, we wanted male-to-female ratio for faculty members in case there were any issues, so any student, if they had a comfort, we could go to a faculty member they felt most comfortable with. And then we also stressed interdisciplinary teams, so we wanted to see more teams created between the different disciplines. So that has really started off. We also set up some firm policies for behavior, et cetera. Uh, and then the last is we came up with a formal proposal process by which we would select programs so people can compete. So there's an announcement that goes out that usually starts 18 months before a trip. So shortly, we'll be accepting proposals for the 2025 trip in May 2025. Those proposals will be selected, or we'll go through them and assess them based on committee. And then they'll make a recommendation, and then they will start recruiting for that particular trip at the beginning of next year when the other trip is closed. So we have a trip going in May this year. We're going to Switzerland, Italy, and Germany. So Ms. Landis can, uh, talk about that in, in greater detail because she's one of the faculty members going on that trip. Um, we tend to also go to the UK a lot. We think of this as sort of travel with training wheels. Students feel most comfortable going to English-speaking countries. Many of them are going out of country for the first time. So we alternate each year. We go somewhere in the UK, and then we pick someplace usually in Europe. But we have gone to Costa Rica and Iceland as well. So that's basically the structure of the system. We just missed two years due to COVID, however. What I'd like to do now is point to the faculty members that have led these trips. And I would like to point out that our lovely, um, associate dean has led six of those. Dr. Locke has led six of those prior to, um, taking the dean position. We also have several others that have launched many successful trips. But I would like to point to first is, as I said, humanities is where the origins of this program come from. So that's why you see so many professors in that category. We have, uh, Dr. Trey Jansen, who is a Shakespeare expert, who led a trip where they went to the Globe Theater, and they got to see a Shakespearean play performed there, and went to Stratford upon the Avon as well. Uh, we have so many exceptional trips. We also had Dr. Locke, um, we've had, um, Dr. D'Amico, et cetera. But I think what's really important is the expansion into interdisciplinary efforts. So we also have, um, Dr. T. He led a trip to Greece, and he also was paired with Greg Trickett, Dr. Trickett, who is a philosophy professor. So that was a nice collaboration. We also have, um, Lori Gooch Marchman. Uh, she's a former professor. She's a geologist, and she went to Iceland, and she was able to point out significant geological, um, points across, um, the whole trip for our students. And then finally, Allied Health has sort of joined our crowd. Um, last year, excuse me, last May, we had, um, a series of just different nurses who went. Shannon Walls took the lead, and they had excursions to see where Florence Nightingale was born, and she was laid to rest, as well as the museum. So we're trying to, um, expand the program by grouping great professors together, people that have a lot of heart for this and are very dedicated to the program. One such person is Professor Landis, and I'm going to turn it over to her now so she can speak about the student engagement.
Yes, thank you very much for letting us talk about this. I am, I was honored to lead the trip to Paris and London, and so I have firsthand experience on some of the impact that it can have on the students. Thank you. And so I had a couple of my students share some of their experiences and their personal experiences of, uh, some of the things were impactful to them, and I'd also like to read some of those personal experiences. Our first, it, sorry, our first student is Jared Woodson currently. He is an honors student, and he also is a biology major and is interested in carrying that forward into molecular biology. And he was very impacted, uh, by the natural, the British Natural District Museum, specifically the Darwinian area. So that was something that was exciting to him. And also, um, the other individual is Ms. Kelly Hawkins, who was one of our students that started off in getting her associates here. And she is, um, now an Allied Health student in, in the sonography program. And for her, she says that, um, traveling itself internationally was very important for her and impactful for being. She says it's one of the best decisions of her life because it helped her to branch out. She shares some of the things that she found to be very, um, interesting to her, but it helped her to branch out and experience and become more competent. And I'd like to share just a few things that they said to kind of give it a little bit more impact for them. The first one is Jared, and he says that the trip provided shades of insight into societies that were very different from his own. An individual looks through the lens of their education, and I would recommend people from all breadth of learning to attend the study abroad trip because in doing so, they will both broaden their horizons and find something pertinent to their field of study, and that will deepen their experience. For him, the London and Paris trip awakened a sense of confidence and a love of exploration that stayed with him, he says, since the trip. And then for Kelly, this was kind of, this was, I don't know, this kind of moved me because she said, getting, when she would go and through the week, sort of have these announcements on the, on, you guys may have seen some of them posted and things like that, talking about the next year's trips that are out there. And she said going on the study abroad, uh, program was one of the best decisions of her life, and that she used to see these posters around the college, and she would think about how she would love to go on one of those, but she always thought, well, this wasn't for me. I can't travel international. There's no way I could do this. And that, um, she got more information from that, and our faculty leads do that. They provide, um, different types of conferences that they can go to, or just meetings so that they can ask questions and various different things like that to provide them with more information. And oftentimes, for some of our students, this is their very first time to get on an airplane. So to be able to take that to, uh, faraway places all over the world, as you saw on the maps, and the wonderful places we've been, is very exciting opportunities to offer to them. And also, please, in the next section, please, so right here, thank you. And, um, just speaking on just their personal experiences alone, this is a little bit of some data talking about how it enriches the students. You can see, um, from, from what Kelly has said, her increased confidence in being able to see new things and new experiences, as well as the maturity level that she received. Um, different trips have different opportunities. The one that we went on, they had a guided tour, and they also had opportunities for self-exploration. And oftentimes on those, that's where they get that maturity and that confidence, going out into a new country on their own and with groups and pairs for a couple of hours, just maybe to a place to eat or a restaurant or something like that, can be really, um, opening and eye-opening and good experience for them. And for Jared, he spoke about the, um, acquiring that skill set that will influence his career as he looked at the, the Darwinian area, the British Museum, as well as understanding his own culture and that of other cultures. And what that does is that provides them with on-hand marketable skills as they go forward into their careers that they wouldn't necessarily mean be able to get in other areas. Broadens that into very marketable soft skills, as well as very desirable skills of critical thinking, teamwork, and, um, communication, personal responsibility, all of those. And it also allows them then to be able to go forward and have that interest to carry on in some of the wonderful Weatherford College bachelor programs we have and the tech programs, as well as the allied health ones. So with that, I'm going to let, um, turn it back over to Adrian so she can talk a little bit more about, um, what we're doing.
I think it's where we're going. And I think, uh, what is really impressing me is the, really the vigor of the support. So the honors program is actually going to start collaborating with us on this. So I've talked to Dr. Cook, who is now leading that program. And we're trying to integrate capstone projects for the honors program into the traveling, um, that these students are doing. Another thing that we're doing is we're working on thinking about what our curriculum looks like. How can we enhance and augment what we do from a curricular standpoint to improve what students gain from this experience? Um, the other thing we are also pursuing is, um, there are some modest EF tours, um, scholarships. We've also started, uh, looking at the Gilman McCain, uh, scholarships provided by the United States State Department for these kinds of programs. And we'd also like to pursue, you know, foundations and, and whatnot, to see if we can fund scholarships for students who show great promise, but maybe don't have the means to support that travel. Finally, we're fortifying some of the things that we are doing to enhance the security and safety of our students and faculty. And at that, I'd like to turn it back over to Dr. T, and he will speak to that. Thank you.
We are, um, starting to mature the program a great deal more than what it was a few years ago. We're going to create, uh, twining with the idea of the Office of International Domestic Programs. That's just an idea right now. But what we're doing is creating more and more structured policy to enhance, to increase, ensure that everyone who's going is going to be safe. Not that we've ever really had a problem with that before, but we want to expand upon, upon those, those requirements. And we're just going to develop a program in such a way that can make the college proud. Just from my own perspective, the tour I led a few years ago was incredibly rewarding. I know the students themselves found that the tour itself was far beyond a much greater value than the money they spent on it, which was about $4,000. So that's all we have to say. Thank you very much. Any questions?
What kind of criteria for selection for students that get invited?
Well, students can just apply. You, if you guys want to go, you can apply too. And we, we take people who are students, who are faculty, who are staff, retired faculty, alumni. Uh, they're, they're welcome to attend, uh, our, our program. Yes, sir.
Let me see the slide right before left. Now, say that it's a positive impact, no question about it, just way in my mind. But, uh, outside of testimony, is there any empirical measurements that's been taken of the agro-change in a post, post-visiting these countries? Like, does it change their major, or does it change their grades? Does it change? What positive? What, what a kind of?
Have we done a survey?
Evaluation methods that you may, may apply?
We would like to expand how we capture information here, but I attended a conference on global education in, uh, Boston about two years ago. And they have solid, um, data that supports what this does. And largely, it has to do with the soft skills that students gain. Uh, what we find is many employers and many people on the career track come out of college without a lot of soft skills. So they were able to measure it, and I can get more data on that if you would like it. But yes, I would say, um, employment and employability through people who go on these trips increases because people see them as being more global, and also they know that there takes, well, responsibility, teamwork, et cetera.
I can attest, I can attest to that.
There are organized methods to measure it. Um, I don't have that data with me now, but I'd be happy to provide some of that to you.
We do have that on our application about travel abroad because it directly correlates with problem-solving skills. And, um, those students that have gone at least once, usually twice, score higher on the problem, problem-solving portion of our applications. So that's verifiable.
There's also, um, specific data that relates to employability and what employers see as a positive in that. So it does lead to a positive trajectory.
I went on the trip in 2009, led by Dr. Ainsworth, to England, Ireland, and Wales, and it was an amazing trip. We didn't have to do the study, duh. But it was so much fun.
We do open it up to, um, people who are connected to the college. So it could be faculty, staff, um, adjuncts. We've had, um, parents come with their children. Uh, we just want to make sure that there's a Weatherford College connection so that there's a sense of responsibility and pride.
There's a lot of, uh, this is very subjective.
Well, I think the?
And there's a lot of, there's a love testimony and that sort of thing. And that's all very understandable and it's very positive and so on. But I'm just interested in empirical evidence that, that would support this. We, we all, we can all imagine how nice all that would be. Been involved in it, and we, we can join you in saying how good it was and how exciting it was and how the understanding we got from it, but?
Dr. Marlette, though?
You know, is that really measurable? Have you been, have you been there?
Well, I'd be happy to coordinate getting some information together and providing it to, um, Dr. T so he can communicate that to you. I'd be happy to pull that together.
And there is a direct correlation, Dr. Marlette, on those students. There is a direct correlation for those students who have had travel experience to problem-solving skills that employers recognize and outline on basic applications.
How is that, how is that done?
Through pre-application testing. All of our applicants have to have pre-application before they're interviewed. They go through a skills test, and it's very in-depth. Sometimes it can take up to two hours.
Skill test?
Yep. We do problem solving, we do clinical area of expertise. Yep.
I really appreciate the inquiry too, because that's exactly what we're trying to do, is, you know, interrogate things a little bit more in-depth. So I, I will be happy to pull some data together for you and have Dr. T send that along to you.
Thank you very much. Dr. T, I, I had, I just have one observation to, to state the obvious. I would, I would encourage and appreciate close attention to safety.
Yes.
Uh, in this world environment that we have now, what a tempting target for the wrong route.
With what has happened in Israel and Palestine, I get, I just shouldn't have think of whatever route was.
That's exactly my point. So I would, uh, I know I'm stating the obvious, but I want to state it anyway. I, I want to pay close attention to that. Sure, come on up.
Sorry to crash the party. One of the trips I was on, we were in, uh, Ireland and the UK. And that was when there was a bombing at Manchester for the concert, right? Um, you, you might remember several years ago. One reason that we have chosen to go with a tour group every time is because they have people on the ground everywhere and absolutely have things under control. And we had some procedures, just so you know, we had some procedures at that time because we were going into London. We were going from Ireland through, very close to Manchester, into London. And so we did things like, I wrote down our hotel and phone number on a piece of paper so that everybody would have it in their pocket when we went out. Now, one of them took a picture of it with their phone, and I said, where's your paper? He said, it's on my phone. I said, no, this is if your phone dies. We need, so we, we do teach problem-solving skills. How do we get through these? So this is why we have people on the ground that are experienced and why we go with a company. So I'm sorry to interrupt, but I want to say we have encountered some scary things, but having that experience and having a company that we trust has been crucial. Yes, absolutely.
You didn't interrupt at all. I'm glad to have your input.
That's great.
Very good. Anyway, that was my observation to you, Dr. T. Thank you so much. On my count, we're down to item number eight, future agenda items or meetings. Dr. Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, next month, we will be bringing the annual equities and athletics report.
Thank you. Item number nine, Mr. Baker, do you have any announcements today?
Yes, sir. We have several events for you to know about. Uh, I'm going to hit some of the highlights here, but you have a list in your packet. We have an interesting program next Wednesday. The U.S. Attorney's Office has approached us, and they will have a panel discussion on fentanyl and its impact on our country. That is next Wednesday. It's at noon in the academic building in the 106 lecture hall. It'll be a panel which will include Neil Notes, the chief of police for the city of Fort Worth, who is actually a Weatherford College alum. Uh, and of course, you are invited to that. Several other things coming up, including a musical theater presentation of the musical Godspell. That is October 26th through the 28th in the Alcat Center. President Farmer mentioned volleyball. We have four more regular season volleyball matches remaining that are here. And then, after that, we are hosting the regional tournament for the first time in volleyball. That is November 2nd through the 4th. And then our jazz orchestra is performing in a concert. That's November 7th in the Alcat Center. That's all for now.
On the volleyball, is, is that all held in our, the one gym, or is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's all held right here?
It's back-to-back-to-back-to-back over three days.
Starts at 5:00 in the morning and goes? Starts at 5:00 in the morning and goes...
It'll start in the morning. It'll go kind of late into the night, but...
I bet it will.
Yes, sir. Be busy. Yes, sir, Dr. Marlette.
What's the form of the October 26th? It's a play, a music exhibit. What's the form of music? Is that instrumentation? What is...
It's a musical. It's like a Broadway musical.
Is there any compliment in that?
Yes, sir. It's like a Broadway musical.
Is there any compliment in that?
No, sir. I believe that's on a track.
Is it Godspell, a track, right?
It's with a track, but the students sing and act and dance, tell a story.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Item number 10 is our closed session to deliberate real property and personnel matters. We will now go into closed session. It looks like 119.
It's now 2:36 in the afternoon. We're coming back into open session on October the 12th, 2023. We are now, we have completed our closed session deliberations. We're now on to agenda item number 11, consideration possible action regarding real property. There are no action items to be taken at this time. Agenda item number 12, consideration possible action, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer or employee. We do have a matter with regard to employee salaries. And I believe Mr. Smith has a motion to make in that regard.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to adopt a revised proposed salary structure change that's been presented to the, with the College Board of Trustees. And these are the latest published schedules. And I may make a move, I make a motion that we approve this revised proposed salary structure.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Appears to be unanimous, so that motion is approved. Item number 13 is adjournment. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.